Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 3rd City of Dayton Council meeting. Would everyone please rise, remember the silent prayer? If you didn't mind, I'd like you to ask for a prayer for a good friend of mine, Mr. Dan Reese, who was a war-mortified who passed away this weekend. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ranckel.
Here.
Member Hurd.
Here.
Member Burns.
Here.
Member Volter.
Here.
Member Bruski.
Here.
Member Gifford.
Here.
City Administrator Gibson.
Here.
City Attorney Fisher.
Here.
First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking everyone that was involved with the Memorial Day Parade. I think the parade went exceptionally well. Lots of fun, weather was good, a little warm, but the weather was great. Ann and Tom Sparks did a lot of work on trying to put it together and coordinating it. They did a great job, and also it all with volunteers, so thanks for doing that. Also, and I'm not going to steal Joe Neary's thunder, but welcome back to, welcome back home to Dayton. Was also a success for Memorial Day. We had a lot of good music by Hurricane and Johnny the Lugnuts. Mr. Baker did a great job of providing some barbecue ribs. It was important, it was great. So, that whole day was fantastic. We look forward to, hopefully we'll have the second, third, fourth, and fifth, and on and on and on. Also, the Manhattan Harbor Architectural Review Board met today to look at the proposed prints for the first house, which is, which is right here, it's going to be, belongs to David Boden. And we met, we reviewed it, we actually met twice. We viewed the drawings and passed the drawings, so now those, that recommendation of ours is going to the Building Department, which the Building Department should be issuing a building permit within, I think, a couple of days, I hope. So, once that's done, then the only thing stopping them is groundbreaking. Hopefully, in June, we can have a house started down there. And then that brings up another topic. If anybody is walking down the floodway or on the ground down there, which a lot of people do, if you see anybody down there dumping, don't hesitate to call the police. This is not a time, I don't deal for people to go down there and start throwing tree limbs and stuff like that on the sites when they're trying to sell them for houses. I think we need to set a better example of what's going on. We also have a lot of people down there lately breaking the windows out of equipment. That's not a good thing. So, if you see anything down there while you're walking, something looks out of the ordinary, call the police. We're more than happy to come down and look and see what's going on. If nobody's doing anything wrong, then fine, it's not a problem. We want people to walk around there and there. We encourage everyone to use the riverbank, the fish, do whatever they want to do, but we just need to stop a few people that are using it as a dumping zone. That's all that I have for right now. Oh, one other thing. We invited Rob Haynes from the Traffic Department to come down to our meeting today. He's had other things to do, so he promised that he would be here in July, and then we can start talking about the intersection of Fifth and O'Fallon again. At this point, I'm going to go on and move it over to the City Administrator.
I've got several things I want to go over. The first thing, call off the tech bus system. They're hosting a public presentation tomorrow at 6:30 at the Callahan Center in Bellevue. I'm encouraged, anybody from the city to attend. What they're doing at the meeting is, they're taking input from the public that will help them determine what bus services in Bellevue and Dayton they would use in the future. So, I encourage everybody that's interested in that to stop by and give your input. I'm not sure what else there were to be discussing, that's all that I really know. They're all doing, obviously, some sort of study to determine the level of service that they'll offer in the two cities. So, if you have a vested interest in that or some concerns, I recommend attending that meeting again. It's tomorrow at night at 6:30 at the Callahan Center in Bellevue. Next, I want to kind of reiterate what the mayor said, as far as the Come Home to Dayton. That was hosted by the Main Street Committee. It was a tremendous success, a great turnout, a consistent flow all day. We had great food, great music, thanks to Johnny and the Lugnuts and Hurricane for providing that. Also, to all the volunteers that, some of y'all were there all day, you know, working the booths and selling the merchandise. So, I really do appreciate that, Ben, from the impromptu barbecue. That was a success. So, to everybody that came out, supported us, to everybody that came out and worked it, I really do appreciate it. It was a, it was a great event, something that we had considered for a number of years, and I'm glad we did, and it was, was a real, real good event, so thanks to everybody for that. We are starting interviews tomorrow for the vacant Main Street position. We're going to run the interviews, the first round of interviews from tomorrow to June 11th. We had well over thirty resumes that came in for this, for the position. More than half of them were just completely outstanding and made it very difficult to even narrow it down. So, we're going to interview probably twelve people or so because the field was so strong. So, we'll start tomorrow, and it'll run through June 11th. And then, if need be, we'll have a second round of interviews the following week. That way, we can fill that position by the end of the month or the start of the fiscal year on July 1st. Some of y'all may have noticed some activity up at 135 and 137 Sixth Avenue. The city purchased those properties back in the fall and in the winter. In an effort to get rid of some of the blankets in that block, we are going to start demolishing them tomorrow or Thursday. We are going to try very hard, and the demo company is working with us, to salvage as much of the historic or buildable material as possible. What we'll do is to try to take an inventory of those things as best as we can and figure out some sort of way to get it to some of the citizens that may be able to put it to good use. I don't want it to be just a free-for-all, and everybody coming up there grabbing what they can. Also, the construction going on, it'll be safer for us to inventory it, inventory it and then come back to it later. So, that's what's going on at 135 and 137. See, that should start pretty soon. I want to thank Barry and Kim Townsley and the rest of the Main Street Committee that worked on some of the posters that you've seen and some of our storefront windows. We went down to the museum and found some cool historic photos to enlarge, and we had protective treatment put on for those so the sun won't fade them. We have a few more still left to put up, and we wanted to get a majority of them up for the Memorial Day Parade. So, as you're walking through town or passing through town, take a look at those, they're really cool. And last, but not least, on my item list here, during the Memorial Day holiday, we did a poster contest similar to what we did last year, and we put the enlarged poster at Sixth and O'Fallon at the Bus Shelter. And we wanted to congratulate the three drawings that were chosen to represent the poster in there. So, tonight, I think some of them may be here. There's three of them, and I would like to call out their name and congratulate them. And you can stop by the city building to get your certificate and prize for that event. But in no particular order, the three people that were featured are Cynthia Hauser, Riley, Tremini, and Jacqueline Blake. So, I'd like to give them a round of applause. Cynthia was kind enough to join us tonight, so here she is standing up. She was one of the three that were on there. So, thank you, Cynthia. It turned out great, we appreciate it.
Did a great job.
And that's all I have.
Want to give a little speech or anything, Cynthia, are you okay? All right. Thank you.
She's a little nervous.
You did a great job. City Attorney's Report? Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review the minutes from May 6 Council meeting for all their changes or adjustments, any motion to accept the amendments.
I'll second.
Which been made seconds, are any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Tonight, we have the second reading of 2014-04, which is adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2014-04, an ordinance adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dayton, Kentucky. This ordinance adopts supplement 25 to the Dayton Kentucky Code of Ordinances, including changes due to ordinances adopted within the previous year and changes due to changes in state statute. It's a second reading.
Need a motion of 2014?
Make a motion, we adopt 2014-04. Second.
Which been made seconds, are any comments? All, please, roll call, please.
Member Volter.
Aye.
Member Bruski.
Aye.
Member Gifford.
Aye.
Member Hurd.
Aye.
Member Burns.
Aye.
We also have a second reading of 2014-05, which is setting the fee for the business of operating taxicabs in the city.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2014-05, an ordinance amending the Dayton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, Section 110.13, setting the fee amount for persons engaged in the business of operating taxicabs in the city of Dayton. Be it ordained by the City of Dayton, Campbell County, Kentucky, that portions of City of Dayton, Kentucky Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, Section 110.13, is hereby amended as follows. Every person engaged in the business of operating taxicabs or limousines certified by the Kentucky Department of Vehicle Regulations for operations in the city with license tax shall be $30 per taxicab or limousine. It's a second reading.
Make a motion, we adopt 2014-05.
I'll second. Which been made, second, are any comments?
Does this mean that the police will be stopping every taxicab that comes into town and making sure they have a license? And every limousine that pulls up for a wedding, make sure they have a license?
If they reside in the city of Dayton and use the Dayton streets, the parking Dayton streets, they should have, they should have a license.
That's not what this ordinance, that says if you're operating a cab, that means every cab that comes into town, every limousine that comes into town. Do you realize that this may cause taxicabs to not come into town?
I realize one thing, that we have too many cars in this city of Dayton that have Ohio plates, and my original argument is, and still is, that we have, we should be tagging these cars with Ohio plates. And if, if a taxicab has Ohio plates and he's residing in the city of Dayton, he should be, he should be tagging it.
But these aren't, not every taxicab has Ohio plates, they have Kentucky plates.
I still say you should have, you should have a...
And this ordinance does not state reside, is that correct?
The ordinance follows the statute, and the statute only allows us to require an occupational license of a taxicab or limousine, which is licensed by the Commonwealth of Kentucky to operate within a limousine vehicle. So, if it's, if it's a taxicab, an Ohio taxicab, and it's not licensed in Kentucky, we can't, we can't require an occupational license.
But if it has an Ohio license plate and it, and it's, and they live or reside in the state, in the city of Dayton, they should be either ticketed or should they have the head of license.
But that's not what that ordinance is saying.
I'm not rescinding my motion, I mean, I'm just, you can, everybody can vote the way they want.
That's not the way it's written, your understanding of it's wrong.
I understand this, when I brought, brought this up, I still complain about the cars in the city of Dayton that have Ohio plates and we do nothing about it. That was the original idea I had. And it was geared for Ohio, taxicabs that have Ohio plates.
But, but just to be perfectly clear, we still can't, you understand, we still can't tag those.
I understand that.
Okay. Okay, the motion is made, and second, and roll call, please.
Member Bruski.
Aye.
Member Gifford.
Aye.
Member Hurd.
No.
Member Burns.
Aye.
Member Volter.
No, as it is written.
Motion's passed. Next, we have the first reading, well, I guess maybe we have to talk about this before we have either reading. We still need to set a meeting place for a city council. We have two pla, two readings tonight, one for, I think, one is a Jack one for me, a W one for here.
One is, one is for here, here in the BFW switching. And the other is for here in the BFW and another place, any other places. That was the original motion, was other places could join in later on.
Number six is just for here in the BFW. There in the BFW, any other place that you might want to have a meeting at.
Seven is for any other place, correct?
Yeah, seven's for here, the BFW, and any other place.
Okay. And then, do we also have one that's just for here?
We do actually have one, it's for here, it's the one that's been read twice before.
Okay. Does anyone have any preferences of which one we, we want to read and vote on, or do you want to read and vote on the other two?
I brought up, number seven would be different places. But if it's, you know, if this is going to be a big issue and constantly going, obviously the last two meetings we couldn't have at the BFW, then maybe we need to make contact with them if they're not going to have a meeting. We had meet the candidates there, and everybody was all in favor of, and there are other places we could have. So, my vote is still for number seven.
I don't think it's pointless to read number six.
I have, I want to take votes and then talk.
I just didn't have a discussion, maybe we can just read one, it's not wasting time. We're going to have a discussion anyway.
My, my concern with the BFW, after we have, if we would have a meeting there and we go into executive session, what do we do, go in the lounge room? There's no private place to have an executive session, and it's a, a business, so, you know, you can't tell them to empty out. And, you know, you can have alcohol there during the meeting, so I just feel like that, for that reason, after the fact, when I was thinking about it, I don't know how we would operate an executive session there.
Anyone else have anything?
I made my statement, I'll make my statement again. I don't care where we, we can meet anywhere. It was handled wrong, and that's, and I'll stand by that. If we were read it a second time before we did any construction, I don't think there would be any problems with this. But if was, construction was started before the second reading, I don't care where we meet at, we can meet outside.
Okay, Donna, so I guess we'll start with 2014-06, which is setting a meeting place for regular city council.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2014-06, an ordinance amending Dayton's Kentucky's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 32, Section 32.21, meetings. This ordinance amends the Dayton Code of Ordinances to set regular meetings of city councils for the first and third Tuesdays of each month at 7:00 PM to be held on an alternating rotation. Number one, in the board meeting room of the Dayton Independent School Administration Building, 3rd and Clay. Two, at the Veterans of Foreign War Hall at Sixth and Main Street, unless moved by a voted council for reasons of emergency, access, or for any other reason. And that's just a first reading.
Okay. Now, can we go and have the first reading of 2014-07?
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2014-07, and it's, an ordinance amending Kentucky's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 32, Section 32.21, meetings. This ordinance amends the Dayton Code of Ordinances to set regular meetings of city councils for the first and third Tuesdays of each month at 7:00 PM to be held in various places throughout the city on an alternating rotation to include, but not limited to, the board meeting room of the Dayton Independent School Administration Building, 3rd and Clay, the Veterans of Foreign Wars at Sixth and Main Street, and such other places as city council sets by order, resolution or motion at the previous meeting. If no such motion is approved, the following meeting shall be at the same place. Also, council can move said meetings to another place within the city by a voted council for reasons of emergency, access, or for any other reason. And that's also a first reading.
Next, we have 2014-07-R, which is filling a vacancy in the office of city council.
This really can't be read until the blank is filled.
Okay. Well, I guess we need to start off with the nominations, if anybody had any nominations for city council, or if anybody in the audience wants to submit their name for city council.
I guess my question, Jack, is if it's not filled by, if it's not filled tonight for a motion for tonight, and if it goes past the 5th, then it is not up to the city council, but it's up to the governor.
That's correct.
So, if we got nominations, I mean, if we got volunteers tonight, unless we made the motion to accept them, Ann or her, it would be a, a viewpoint then.
Well, first of all, it still could be done at an emergent, at an emergency meeting with 24 hours notice, so it's still possible to be done before.
But if it had to be done by the 5th, I don't know how you get your 24 hours notice.
Yeah, but do you think that if you give it 24 hours notice, from the morning, which was the 4th, it could be done on the 5th? But, but you are right, if it's not done by midnight the night of the 5th, then you don't have the choice of changing your mind later and saying, you know, well, once it's gone, it's gone.
And then, and then it's appointed by the governor with input from anyone, or?
The governor gets input all the time.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
Well, I know that, that I talked to several different people, Lynn Adams, Catherine Hamilton, and also Dennis Asher, and all three of those have expressed interest in submitting for council.
And I know we got a written letter from Joe Neary. Has anybody else submitted anything that we haven't seen?
Danny Lane has submitted something as well.
I'm sorry?
Danny Lane has submitted something as well.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
You know, I've got to get, show an interest in, in that position.
Okay.
Officer O'Malley, name in the hat, too, since I'm running, you know.
Can I say something?
Yes, you can.
I did not express an interest in doing it. I'm going to play that with anybody who doesn't come here. What I said was that I didn't think it should be someone on the ballot. I thought that was unfair, and it should, in the upcoming election, that I really think council should appoint someone who doesn't have interest in running for political office, and that I would be willing to do it. That's different from expressing an interest in doing it.
I'll take that back. I talked to Lynn Adams, and he said he was willing to do it.
That's a very big difference. I'm not seeking it, but I don't think it should be somebody on the ballot, my personal opinion, and I would be willing to do it.
Lynn, Lynn, are you on the board of adjustment still?
I was never on the board of adjustment.
Are you on planning and zoning?
I am on planning and zoning.
If you become a member of council, you would have to leave that seat. I just want everybody to know.
That's fine, that's not surprising to you, Jack.
And under that, Lynn, is that also under the historic, the B-A-R piece also?
I'm on planning and zoning, the Board of Architectural Review, and Manhattan Harbor Architectural Review Committee.
This applies only to the planning?
I don't think it applies.
It applies only to the planning, so he could still...
I'd hate to lose you off of those, Lynn, no offense, but I'd rather see you stay on those. You've got, you've got too much of a background, and your expertise is too valuable.
I just think you should appoint somebody to temporarily fill that seat that is not on the ballot. That's my personal opinion, which carries no weight in this room whatsoever.
Eddie, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if I'm clear. I definitely draw my name.
Okay.
Okay, that's okay. I'm doing it, because I kind of agree with what...
I, I'm for Ron Gunning to hold the position. So, after, he was a mayor, councilman, to finish it six months out, I think it would be appropriate.
I really...
Or else, do we have an other discussion?
I, I would like to interview the people who are interested in it myself, and the inner days members.
Jack, I don't, I don't have a problem, I can't, but I go back to, if you, if you interview, the interviews will be Hampton, be tomorrow, or would, we just have to make notice that we're interviewing somebody?
You could give, you could give notice that you're interviewing.
And you, you just...
I mean, you, you could tomorrow say that, say you're, just for an outlandish example, tomorrow you decide that you're going to have a meeting Thursday night at 10 o'clock. You could, there would be 24 hours notice because you could do that, and you could interview them right then, or you could decide to interview them tomorrow and put out a notice for a meeting on Thursday.
I just want to be legal about this, that's, you know, that's anything I'm concerned with.
Well, I guess I make a motion that Ron Gunning hold position.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Which been made, second, are any comments? Roll call, please.
Member Gifford.
Aye.
Member Hurd.
No.
Member Burns.
Aye.
Member Volter.
No.
Member Bruski.
Aye.
Okay, next we have reading of 2014... Next, we have the Order of 2014-07-R, which is filling a vacancy in the office of city council.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2014-07-R, an order filling a vacancy in the office of city council. Be it ordered by the City of Dayton, Campbell County, Kentucky, Section 1, that a vacancy in the office of the city council of the city of Dayton, Kentucky, having occurred on May 7, 2014, due, due to the resignation of council member Robert Allen, council is hereby pursuant to KRS 838.040, and within 30 days from such date, appoint Ronald Gunning to fill said vacancy. Section 2, there being a general election in Kentucky between the date of this appointment and the end of the term to which the appointment is made, the within appointment shall continue until the election of a council member to serve until, until the end of the term. Section 3, this order shall be signed by the mayor, attested by the city clerk, recorded, and shall be effective the earliest time provided by law.
Anyone need a motion of 2014-07-R? Second. Motion's been made, second, and may roll call, please.
Member Hurd.
No.
Member Burns.
Aye.
Member Volter.
No.
Member Bruski.
Aye.
Member Gifford.
Is it too late for me to make a motion?
If you'd like to make a motion, you can make, if you'd like to make a motion at any time.
I'd like to make a motion still, and though it's already done, I think it would be fair to everybody concerned that we would do an interview with everybody, for people who were interested in running. I'd make that motion, and do it in a timely manner, real time.
So, motion on the floor, can we, we'd like to second that.
I'll second it.
The only other thing that you would have to do, I presume, in order to make this motion, would be to include rescinding the, the appointment of Ron Gunning. Oh, correct, Jack?
I don't think it can be rescinded, it has, it has...
Okay. Would you like to withdraw your motion?
No.
Okay, motion been made, seconded. Need to have a roll call.
Member Burns.
No.
Member Volter.
Aye.
Member Bruski.
No.
Member Gifford.
No.
Member Hurd.
Aye.
Moving on, Department heads report, we have Captain Eddie from the Police Department, who is still in for Chief Scott.
I have nothing, nothing to report.
Nothing at all, everything's going pretty well?
I'm pretty quiet.
I know that we did meet with the, with Representative Dennis Keane, and also some people from Homeland Security, you knew a little bit about...
I don't know. Chief was there, and that's all we know, not much more about me.
Okay, why do the chief? Sorry about that. I know that the Chief of Ryan met with Dennis Keane, our state rep, also people from Bellevue and Southgate, I believe. They're, they're looking at applying for a grant for cameras going throughout each of the three cities. I think the meeting went very well. From what I know, they asked us to apply for three, in three different sections. Hopefully, and that we should be funded for it, so that's something we're pretty excited about doing. Like I said, it's going to be through a Homeland Security Grant, so that's going to be coming up, and should be a, a, a aid to us. Chief Otter from the Fire Department.
Just like to share some things that went on and made with the Fire Department. Crew 3 participated in the Dayton High School pre-prom. Went very well, that was May 3rd. Crew 2 participated in Dayton baseball training on May 3rd. The Fire Department actually attended a class in Alexander Fire Department, it's called FirstNet, and basically, this was over, our dispatch will be changing through technology in the next eight to 10 years, so I don't really pay attention with that, with the grants for updating our equipment at the station. Crew 3 attended a, the Fire Department participated in Career Day at Lincoln School. On the week 22nd, the crews participated in World of the Pray, and on the week 26th, Brian Boers and I attended the Air and Police Security Committee Rescue Response Subcommittee meeting in Station 9 at Cincinnati. And then, July 20th, 27th, and August 3rd, we'll be participating... And then July twentieth, twenty-seventh, and August third, we'll be participating on the river with some training events with Cincinnati, New County Water Rescue, Munish Township, Covington, on moving patients from moving barges. We'll also be, we're going to walk through with the Queen City Riverboats. And we'll be going over each other's vessels and radio technologies. Our next part will be Fire Board meeting, will be June nineteenth at the County Center in Bellevue at six P.M. Any questions? Thank you.
The clerk's office, Tom, you can?
No, sir, I just passed out a copy of the financials group line.
Don, you have anything to come?
No, I don't have anything else to add, I'm sure everybody's on the top of their minds.
Rick, you have anything from Works?
The only part I have is on the one thirty-five and one thirty-seven, that sidewalk in that area will be closed until the buildings are down. It's something good wrong.
Okay. At this time, Justin, you have anything from the Y you'd like to talk about?
I just wanted everyone to be aware, we just started our middle and high school summer program. Um, it's in combination with Bellevue, the first, um, four weeks, um, is hosted at Bellevue High School and, um, any middle and high school student between Bellevue and Dayton, um, is allowed to attend. And then the following eight weeks, um, will be hosted at Dayton and Bellevue students are also allowed to attend. The first, uh, day they did tie dye t-shirts and slip inside, um, hung up on my Facebook for awesome pictures and uploaded video, um, it's a hundred and fifty foot slip inside, it was awesome and nobody got hurt, so that was even better. And then today they're making ice cream and we're, um, doing lots of different things where it's, it's fun, but they're also learning, um, the science behind different things. We're going to go to Kings Island in a couple of weeks here, but before the students are going to Kings Island, they complete workbooks that, um, talk about the science and math behind, um, roller coasters and all that, so, um, we're excited about that. And then next week, um, we are partnering with Lincoln's, uh, Family Resource Center, um, which is run by Gina Byrne, to provide an eight-week, uh, summer program for kinder, uh, first through fifth graders. Right now we have, we are at our max, um, we have a hundred and eight kids signed up. And I, um, have tons of parents that are looking at me that want their kids signed up as well, but, um, right now we just, we are completely on our max because of staffing and issues. So I've been reaching out to some parents, asking if they'd like to volunteer, uh, to come out and with every one volunteer, we can have, uh, ten more kids attend, so, um, hopefully we can get some of those kiddos involved. But we've also been looking into extending library time for, um, at Lincoln Elementary, so we're going to staff it on Mondays, uh, times I think are going to be like from noon to six o'clock that, um, families can utilize the Lincoln Library during the summertime, so, that's all of that.
All right, thank you.
Justine, I'd like to say something, I really appreciate what you're doing, working with the school and helping combine the school with the city together as you are. The school's really, really just moving along so great and I'm so glad that we're able to get that cooperation between the city and the schools as we have right now, I mean, things are just, but I don't need, how about them?
Team effort, it's great to have the support all around.
I don't care what anything negative is said, I'm behind it a hundred percent.
I'm behind it too, I'm prepared, follow up here now.
Thank you, great job. Okay, thank you. Moving on, standings' minute reports, audience member Maruski?
We've been financing the feedback, we've, 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 we've got to anybody in that council meeting or we'll have a special meeting for everybody. We have a special council meeting on the seventeenth for the first reading of the.
Okay.
Excuse me.
That won't be a special. Mr. Rager.
I didn't want anybody telling.
Right.
So.
They didn't get that.
Public safety.
So are we saying the budget as we discussed at our, at our budget meeting stands as is?
Budget that we put together by Michael and sent out and emailed everybody, I think he's still working on it.
We're still working on it after three meetings?
Yep.
I thought last night, I thought we were all in agreement and everything was up cause, so.
We weren't in agreement.
We weren't. I guess you never said that, so where are we on it then?
We're yet.
To be honest, I didn't know, uh, we've walked out, we're just, uh, I probably were on the same page, I don't know if this one or not, so I don't really know.
Yeah.
What direction to go.
So who's on what page?
Well, when it works up next on each meeting?
As soon as possible.
Anybody have a date?
I, I would tell next week, but we could make it Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week, or Monday the sixteenth? Or any weekend after that.
I do, I do tomorrow at four.
Four o'clock tomorrow?
Well, I cannot do, I'm sorry, I can't do that, I can make it during the day. On Wednesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, tomorrow, I'm okay.
Four o'clock tomorrow? Four o'clock tomorrow?
Because I make, I want to make a statement right now, but I don't want to come into a, a council meeting on the seventeenth and hand out paper to people sitting on council not being aware of what we're doing at the budget meeting.
No, it'll all be, that budget will be emailed to everybody prior to, way before you vote on it, you'll give me time to look at it.
I hope so.
Public safety, member Volter?
I don't have anything at this point.
Public Works will be taken over by member Gunning, Parks and Real Estate, member Burns?
Just a couple of things, Ken, the Park Board has not met this month yet. The next meeting for the Park Board is June sixteenth at the VFW. I did meet with Nicole Brickler, she was a young lady, made a presentation about, uh, right, her father's instructor told her that there was no money in the budget for, for plaques or anything. She is pursuing donations and other monetary things from other outside sources and I told her to report back to us. One more quick question, Rick.
Before you, before you move on, before you go through all the work of trying to get donations for this, is this something the council is interested in doing? Or does this need to be addressed with the referral developer also?
Well, I, she has met with Mr. Emboden and he's on board with it, but, uh, she also understands stuff under construction down there. I left her with an idea that maybe she could put a plaque up at the steps going up to the flood wall, uh, right now and maybe something later, uh, she'd come up with some other ideas. But, uh, she said she'd report back to us, it's a great question, does council want to, uh, want to pursue it or not pursue it? I, I think it's a great idea, so I'll leave that up to council.
I mean, the only thing that I think about is, and I don't know the lady.
I don't.
I don't know the lady one thing or another, but is this, is this something that we want that if everybody's mom, dad, brother, sister, father, whatever passes on, that we want a plaque put up for these individuals? We may, we may, we may not, I don't know, but I mean, it's awful hard for one person to do it and not let whoever else comes forward to want to do it. And it's, I don't know how, I don't know what it would be, is there going to be some type of a standard so that they all look the same? Are you walking along and then all of a sudden you see what appears to be like a headstone? Or, or is there something else, like a signpost, or is it going to be a brick in a pavement?
That's what I was thinking, bricks, we've done that before, but you're going to have a bunch of people.
That just have to be placed somewhere.
Please.
We do have bricks right now that are waiting to. We, I guess, make a decision on the new city building location. We have bricks that will be brought back out and placed and we could maybe work something in.
Remember, that's also something, maybe you have a memory garden somewhere, you know, and people want to buy bricks and do that, I don't know.
At the last, at the last council meeting, you just assigned it to me to talk to her.
I see.
And, and so I, I did what you instructed to, or if we're, if, I'm offered to help this, help her or any other individual out that's going to honor their parents or anybody else for a city of Dayton, but that's going to be up to rest of council tidbits.
I think it's something we may need to talk about or, or, I think it's something we definitely need to talk about and I think we definitely need to go to a little more discussion about it, whether we do it now or later or something else. But I just don't want somebody going out there and trying to raise thousands of dollars and then all of a sudden say, hey, I raised ten thousand dollars, I'm going to put a bunch of monuments up for somebody, just, I don't know if it's a good idea.
Well, I would think before, was her name Nicole?
Yes.
Goes any further, that somebody should contact her and say that, you know, here's the direction we think we should go in so she doesn't take off and do something and then.
But that direction has to come from, I, I think it has, has come from council. We have to give her some kind of direction because, as Ken said, we, she might raise a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars and then we, we could accommodate her, so.
Exactly.
This council has to come up with directions that we can give to her.
I, I know that, that Michael Bond has always talked to me about doing something to memorialize his father, Miles, who was a accountant and everything else. And I know if Michael had his way, he would put a sixteen-story sculpture up in the middle.
He doesn't need anything, my husband must.
I know that, but I mean, he's always talked to me about.
I was thinking maybe as though they have some microphones to use, because I'll tell you what, I don't know if this is like this here, I can't hear it, the city building, I can't hear it on the TV, I can't hear it sitting in the front row, I have hearing aids and now, but I, I mean, those are just sitting up there for nothing.
We did have some problem.
I can hear you fine because I'm in a loud booming voice.
We need live mics, is what we need, these are not live, these are hooked into the camera.
I mean, it's just really a waste of the people, maybe they can hear, I can't.
What we had to.
I think it's a waste of time.
What we had is we've got, it's not the microphone, because we originally set them up down here, it worked for that first meeting. We have an issue with our conversion equipment, the conversion equipment that we have back at the office because when they, it's going into the, into the camera permanently, it's when we convert it.
Well, we, we need to spend some money to get some better microphones in. But I'm just, I'm just using Michael as an example with a monument because I know from years that he has talked to me, but I mean, these things could happen.